John 10:15. And so the first thing to note about Christ's death is it is for our good. Christ's death is for our eternal life. And this is, the author points out, one of the proofs of his love. Right? And, and he makes, again, a very interesting observation of 1 Corinthians 13 verse 5. When it describes what love is, true love is, it says, "Love does not seek its own." See, William Gouge applies 1 Corinthians 3 verse 5 to Christ. And he shows just how great Christ's love is in that he gave himself. And by giving himself, he did not seek his own. Meaning, he did not do it for any advantage that he could gain. He did not do it because there was any lack or need in himself. He did it for us. He did it for our good. We are the ones who benefit from this death. And this gives us a very important lesson on love. Right? This is where he zeroes in, i- in this part, right? Because there's, there's many things you could say about the, the wonders of Christ's love. But this is where he zeroes in. That the lesson is, part of what love looks like is being concerned for the good of the one you love. And that's one of the clear manifestations of a person who loves the other. They want to do good. They want to benefit. They want to give themselves for the sake of the good of the other. And that's the, the model of Christ's love. That's what husbands ought to do in loving their wives. I want you to see the difference. Because last week, we also pointed out that one of the expressions of love is willingness to give yourself. Right? To not live for yourself, but giving yourself. The difference, the difference of this point is the emphasis that the giving of yourself is for the purpose of doing good for the other. You are so bent because of love, compelled because of love, to do good for your spouse. That you're even willing to give up your very own life to do them good. Now, let me just say by qualification, when we say, "do them good," what it means for them to experience good should be biblically defined. Alright? Sometimes we have a worldly notion of what good looks like. Ah, just make them comfortable, spare them from facing a hard truth. Or just tamper them, or make them very relaxed. No, that's, that's not what good is according to scripture. Right? Good according to scripture is being in line with what God wants for the person. And doing what God wills for the person. And that's what's ultimately good for the person, even if it means some difficulty. Right? So just, just have that in mind, because we wanna eliminate all worldly notions of what is good for the person. And we have, uh, we have the tendency to think good in a very worldly way. But with that said, love is what compels us to give ourselves for the good of the other. 1 Corinthians 10:24, it says, "Let no one seek his own good but that of the other person." This is in, was said in the context of Christian liberty. And if there's any, uh, part of the Christian life that will test how great your love is for your brethren. And apply that to the home, your, your love is for the, the members of your household. Is if you are willing to forego your liberty, the thing that you are, uh, that is lawful for you to do in and of itself. But you're willing to give it up for the sake of the person. Okay? And so, this shows us that the source of much of discord, fleshly fights, and disunity in the home. Is when people, instead of loving one another and seeking the good of one another, are only concerned about themselves. Philippians 2:21 speaks of seeking your own, right? Seeking your own advantage. That's contrary to love. The kind of mindset and disposition that's only concerned that you are experiencing good yourself. Right? And bahala na the others around me, basta ako, I'm, I'm, I'm secure. So that is not loving. Christ's example of showing what is love is seen in seeking the good of the other. Here's a quote from the author. Uh, it says, I quote, it's on the screen. "From hence, by just consequence it follows that Christ merited not for himself. Was there any need that Christ should come down for, uh, come down from heaven on earth to purchase anything for himself? When he was going out of the world, thus he prayed, 'Now, O Father, glorify thou me with the glory which I had with thee before the world was.'" So this is William Gouge. This is something that he said. And the point here is he wants us to ponder, really, ultimately, Christ had nothing to gain, nothing to merit for himself. When he came and became man. And he quotes John 17 verse 5. Because, no doubt, because of Christ's crucifixion, the Father was pleased and glorified the Son. Some people might say, "Oh, he, he gained that? He gained, uh, the name that is above every name. He gained, uh, the, the glory." Right? But notice what John 17 verse 5 says, that the glory that the Father bestowed on him is the glory which he had with the Father, even before the world was. Right? It's amazing. It's something he already possessed. Right? And so, when we think of this act of love, that ultimately, in the ultimate sense, okay? There is nothing that added to Christ's glory. And it, it, it shows that it was a very selfless act from our Savior to come. Now, there are some possible objections, and the author answers them. Let's just go through them. And the objections simply try to highlight that the Savior was really intent on doing good for the church. And the first objection is this. Uh, it was based on Hebrews 12 verse 2. "He endured the cross for the joy that was set before him." And so the objection goes like this. He gained joy set before him. So he was trying to gain something for himself. Right? That's the objection. And so, was it really completely selfless? Right? That's, that's the question. And here's the answer of the author. "He used that joy, the joy set before him, which is, which of right was due to him as an, as a help, to support him in the weakness of his human nature, not as a recompense which he should deserve." Right? The, the, the point here is, the joy set before him is what sustained him to endure the cross. But the joy set before him ultimately understood in the context of his fellowship with the Father. Alright? Was something that was already due him. He already deserves that. Right? Again, John 17, the, the glory which he had before the foundation of the world. Now, it's not to flatten it out and to take away, uh, any, um, to take away the fact that there, there really is a rewarding of the Son's labor. Alright? But the point is that he already deserves being fully God, all the glory that he possessed. Another objection. Uh, "He became obedient to the death of the cross, wherefore God also has highly exalted him." Right? Objection, again, namely to, he was doing something to gain. Alright? To gain the, the exaltation of Philippians 2 verse 9, that the Father gives him a name above every other name. Right? So was he trying to gain something? And here is, this is the consequence that followed after his death, not the cause or the motivation of his death. Uh, here, uh, the author is talking about the flow of Philippians chapter 2. Right? And Philippians chapter 2 is, uh, simply talking about what resulted after his death. Right? But it was not speaking about what moved him to die. Right? Now, there's, his, the Savior's motivation, if you study the scriptures, in, in his giving him his life. Alright, it's, it's so much more complex. Um, sorry, one moment, one moment. I, I gotta pause really quick. Sorry, one moment. Sorry, sorry, I'm back. Had to quickly do something. Um, okay, I, I hope we could, uh, uh, pick up from the thought. So in Philippians chapter 2, alright? Uh, he, it is simply speaking of the consequence that followed after his death. Alright? And not the motivation or the cause of it. And so, the, the worship that is described and the submission that's described in Philippians chapter 2, where every knee will bow, every tongue will confess. Alright? Is not something that Christ needed to be fulfilled as, as, as God. Alright? He does not need that worship. Otherwise, he would be a needy God. Right? But it, it just shows how worthy he is, especially in light of what he did on the cross. How worthy Christ is to be worshipped and submitted to. So that's the second objection answered. There's a third objection he deals with. "Christ being a man was bound to the law, and therefore for himself he ought to fulfill it." Now, this is taken, uh, taking from the teaching in Galatians, where it speaks of Christ being born under the law. Alright? And it says that, uh, that the concern is, uh, he was doing it for himself. The obedience to the law and the fulfillment of the law, he was doing it for himself. But here's his, his angle, the way he answers it. Because he is the God-man, he was bound to nothing further than it pleased him. Here it is, voluntarily to subject himself unto for our sakes. What this means is, uh, the obligation, when, when Christ came to this earth, and the obligation that he fulfilled under the law. Alright? Was not something that he was forced onto, but was something he voluntarily gave himself to. And this speaks really of the great condescension of the Savior. Right? The law giver, because he is the law giver, being fully God, became the law-abider when he became man. And all of that was voluntary. That's, that's the point. He was all voluntary. So, in summary, this is what the author is driving, um, driving at. The love of Christ is demonstrated in, in the selfless act of doing good for the church. Selfless, because in the ultimate sense, there was nothing for him to add to his value, worth, and glory. It's, it's very, it's very, very profound when you think of that. It's very profound that the Savior, now here, here, catch this. Not only that he did it selflessly and, and with nothing to gain for himself. But he did it for those who deserves his wrath and his judgment. And that's where the author will go to later, uh, uh, toward the end of this study. How this is for those who do not deserve, who do not deserve his kindness. So some considerations. Uh, applying it directly to husbands first, because the text is applied to husbands first. Husbands, fellow husbands, let us prioritize the good of our wives. Right? I think that's the, the plain, clear application. There is something that should drive us as husbands, as we seek to love our wives, is to really think deeply of what is good for our wives. Again, biblically defined, what is good for them. And giving ourselves to, to let them have that good. And the good, of course, centering in their relationship with God, with Christ. Right? There should be no place, and by God's grace, you ought to mortify it. There should be no place to really just thinking of your own personal benefit and good. Right? Let us mortify the tendency to just calculate all the things that our wives are not doing. She should be doing this better, doing that better. Alright? Let our energies be focused on really, really seriously thinking of doing good to them. Let us also prioritize the good of the whole household. Right? Of course, primarily to the wife, but also by extension, it should include, right? The whole household. Our children. Um, the, the family members under us. We have to think of, uh, what is good for the household, biblically defined. And seeking to give ourselves to that. And the third, and I've been, uh, sounding this fourth, that a seek to mortify selfish priorities. The tendency, the natural tendency in our hearts to only think of ourselves or do things for our own benefit. And so, that's what we could get from that first point, looking at Christ's wonderful love. Now, the second, uh, major point that we're gonna look at is on, of the particular ends why Christ gave himself. And of the condition of the church before Christ took her. Now, this is focused more on Ephesians 5:26 to 27 on the screen. And let's, um, let's read it. Okay? Uh, "so that he might..." So he gave himself for the church, "so that he might sanctify her, having cleansed her by the washing of water with the word, that he might present to himself the church in all her glory, having no spot or wrinkle or any such thing, but that she would be holy and blameless." Right? So when, i- it says here, "particular ends," meaning the purpose for Christ's, um, love and, and self-giving. The purpose in verse 26, I think it is clear, indicated with the word "so that." He gave himself so that he might sanctify her. Right? Um, and we see that again in verse 27. "That," right? "that he might present to himself the church in all her glory." The author, alright, just, uh, it's not a, a, a major focus, but he points out, just to familiarize the readers with, uh, the verses. That this, uh, verse 26, uh, indicates the condition or the state of the church in this world. Right? Meaning, in this life today. Right? So it says, "sanctify her, cleanse her by the washing of the water with the word," is something the church experiences now. Right? She experiences that sanctification. She experiences that washing. And then verse 27 points to the state of the church in the world to come, future. Right? "That he might present to himself the church in all her glory." And notice why this is future. It speaks of the glorification of the church. "No spot or wrinkle or any such thing, but that she would be holy and blameless." So there's that present experience and application of redemption, verse 26. Which secures the future assurance of glorification, verse 27. So verse 26, the author points, is foundational, the experience of verse 26, the sanctifying and washing in this life, in Christ that she experiences, is foundational, because it is what secures the future glory that she will experience. Right? And so, the end, or the particular purpose for which Christ gave himself for the church, is to, in summary, sanctify her. Right? And the sanctification comes through the means of the washing of water with the word. Right? The centrality of the Word of God as that which reveals the truths about Christ, applied by faith into our lives as we experience it by the enabling of the Holy Spirit. Now, the author, I'll just say this quickly. The author, uh, mentions that cleansing, alright? Corresponds to justification and sanctifying to sanctification. Um, at this point, although, um, I have not, uh, so deeply looked into this. But at, at this point, I just wanna say, because probably some of you read that part. I, I wouldn't make a, a, a clear-cut difference of sanctifying and washing as if one pertains to justification and one pertains to sanctification. By the way, I'm taking for granted that you guys know the difference of justification and sanctification here. Uh, justification having to do with your legal standing before God. That is, o- o- once and for all before the throne room. Alright? Where he, he declares you're righteous. And sanctification, alright? Although it, you experience the initial, alright? The initial, um, the initial separation from sin, but also involves the ongoing growth in holiness. Alright? And my point is, I wouldn't, uh, make a clear-cut difference in terms of, uh, I, I hope you, you see what I mean. In terms of, uh, this one, uh, verse 26, sanctify her and then washing her of water with the word. Okay? Because, because both could be true. Right? But the thing that we could take away is, indeed, now, this is what we could take away. Indeed, the washing of the church, the sanctifying of the church, does involve God's declaration of justification and his ongoing work of sanctification. That is true. Alright? No person can be sanctified apart from being justified. And no person who is truly justified will not be sanctified. Both come for the Christian. Right? It's not, uh, it's not a separate blessing. All those who are in Christ enjoy all those that Christ has purchased for his bride. Okay? So, all of that to say, that it, um, it shows us that the, the, the purpose of Christ's giving of himself from his love for the good of the church is sanctification. Now, earlier, now, here's an important point. Alright? You won't see it on the screen. Here's an important point. I said earlier that your definition of good has to be biblic, be biblically guided. And so here, we see what biblically, uh, i- it shows us what good is for the person. Namely, the person's sanctification. Right? So that means, what you do as a husband, uh, giving yourself for the good of your wife, should be for her sanctification. And that even applies, if the wife is not a Christian. Alright? Giving, uh, her, alright? The gospel. Displaying the gospel and then seeking her good, knowing that being united to Christ is the most important thing for her. And so you're inviting her to Christ. And so, what you do, now, uh, don't get me wrong. I don't mean that in the home, all you do is Bible studies, because it's only sanctification. So, uh, let's not eat nalang, or let's not go on a vacation. I'm not saying that. Alright? But in all the, uh, uh, variety of activities that you do in the home, it should contribute to their overall sanctification. Even leisure, alright? Or work. Right? Homeschool, or just a relaxed time in the beach, whatever it be. Alright? If you, as the head of the household, it is your responsibility that the home is growing in sanctification, or is being sanctified. Right? It, it, it hangs on you. The Lord will ask you, husbands. Alright? He won't ask you mainly, uh, have you brought your wife to this place or that place? Have you, have you, you know, has she experienced this or that around the world? That won't be his main concern. It will be her sanctification. The same thing goes for the wives, alright? Alright? As, as the helpmate, and doing your part, that the most important service you are to give to your husband is to help him in his walk with the Lord. And translate that even to the relationships of parents and children. So here, it's, it's very nice now, because we have, alright? A clearer picture, alright? Of that. And, and of course, that calls for some practical things in, in the pursuit of sanctification. Alright? The importance of family worship together. The importance of meaningful prayer with each other. And if we understand that sanctification comes through the means of God's Word. That the Word has to be central in the home. The Word has to be taught. It should not be a strange thing or a rare thing for the Word to be spoken in the home. That's very important. Right? And that's why sometimes when, when some people say, "Oh, I just wanna have a Bible study," or "I wanna minister and, and, and do something related to spreading the Word." And that's good, that's great. That's something we have to cultivate. But sometimes it's said to the neglect of the home. Right? "Bible study diri, Bible study dia, pero why Bible study? Walang Bible study for the people in the home." Right? What's that? What's that in God's eyes? Now, again, I'm not downplaying the, the, the importance of having Bible studies and, and reaching out to the world. Can I just need to balance myself? So that it won't, uh, cause you to, to be hindered, to hear the point. But the point is, we have to really do our part to contribute for the sanctification of the home. It is love, right? It is love that will compel us to do that. Because love wants to do good for those in the home. Now, the last point that we're gonna look at is on the condition of the church. Alright? Because the, the whole point about sanctification, um, assumes something about our condition. Right? If I say that my son badly needs a bath. Right? He needs to be cleaned. He needs to take a bath and change his clothes. What does that assume? Yeah? That he's dirty, right? He probably played in the mud. He probably had some potty time. Or he's probably very sweaty. It assumes that he's dirty. Right? And so, the, this, uh, um, point about sanctification presupposes the impurity, pollution, and corruption. Right? Of God's people, again, of course, speaking of God's people prior to her being sanctified. Right? It assumes that there is sanctifying needed, because we are not living separate from this world and from our flesh. So it points to the reality of the condition, alright? Of God's people prior to being saved. Alright? So this shows us that things that are impure are in need of cleansing. Right? You don't think of sweeping your floors when it is already, you know, super clean. Right? I hope so. Unless you're the type to, you know, one, oh, one, uh, dust, right? Or, you know, you clean, and you find the need to clean when there is something unclean. And the author points to something theologically loaded, that the church came from Adam's loins. Right? Uh, this speaks of our condition prior to Christ. That when we were born into this world. Right? We were born in sin. And coming from Adam's loins says two things about our condition prior to Christ. Right? And if you're not yet in Christ here tonight, this is your condition. Adam's sin and guilt is your sin and guilt. This is taught by Romans 5 and taught by 1 Corinthians 15. That your standing before God is that of one who is guilty. But not only your legal standing before God because of Adam's sin, but also the condition of your heart. Theologians call that original sin. The total depravity of man. You not only carry a bad standing legally, but also a bad heart. but also a bad heart practically, which manifests itself in actual sin. And so the author makes this point because it shows us the condition of the church prior to meeting Christ. Because prior to meeting Christ, we come into this world with this bad news, that we came from Adam's loins. And the only way for us to be redeemed out of that guilt and that pollution is through the second Adam, namely, Christ. And so, this cleansing, this sanctification being spoken of is massive because it 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 does something that is impossible for us to do on our own, right? How could we fix that legal uh um guilt that we have before the throne because of Adam's sin and this bad heart that we possess if we are not yet born again, um, that is totally depraved and enslaved to sin? How could we possibly break away from that and cleanse ourselves from that when the very source of our pollution is our hearts? And so this should magnify the great work of sanctification that Christ is the only one able to cleanse and redeem this type of people. But this shows us, now, here's where, this is where the the author applies this truth. This shows us how wretched indeed our condition was prior to Christ. Christian, if you think that it is no longer useful to think about your condition prior to Christ because that's a thing of the past, anyways, I'm already born again, I don't have to think about it anymore, then you will miss out on important lessons because the Apostle Paul did not think that way. Ephesians two, very famous passage that speaks about the condition of the Christian prior to salvation. He saw it very necessary to remind them of their condition prior to Christ because it bears very important lessons. Much of the weakness of a Christian's walk could be owing to the fact that we forgot what we once were. Right, we forgot what we once were, and it will have an impact on the way we view Christ and our ongoing need of his grace because it could make us think that now we have become self-sufficient. Now, here's an important thing he does, and I find this very, very edifying, right? He now says, so if that's the condition, right, if that's the condition of the church, what does it mean in terms of three relationships that we have, right? If this is our condition prior to Christ, totally depraved and impure, what does it mean in terms of our relation to Christ? Our relation to self, number two, and our relation to others, right? How should that impact how we view our relationship to Christ, ourselves, and to others? And this is where we will end, and this is um really rich with practical considerations. So first is in relation to Christ, and I simply quote what the author says on the screen. In regard of Christ, alright, the more to magnify his love. Our former estate before that he cast the wings of his mercy upon us shows our unworthiness, our vileness, and wretchedness, and in that, respect it, open our heart and mouth to think and say, "Oh, Lord, our Lord, what is man that thou art mindful of him and the son of man that thou visiteth him?" Scouting from the Psalm. And so, one practical impact this should do is to make us um hold the love of Christ in a more precious way, not uh be um passive toward the mercy of God, and to show us that God is really so gracious, so condescend, that the mindset of the Psalmist is, for God to even have a thought of us is a great mercy, right? If a very famous, important person, imagine who was a famous, important person in your view? A president, maybe, a king, right, or a high-profile individual in society? If he tells you, "Oh, I was thinking of you today," right, you'll say, "Wow." In in all the things that you're so busy with, you're thinking of me today, ah, thank you, huh? What more? The God above the heavens, our God, our Savior. He does more than just being mindful of us, he has done so much in his love. It should make us melt each time we think of his love. Secondly, what should the consideration of our prior condition apart from Christ should do in relation to ourselves? And he says, in regard of ourselves, this is to be thought of, to humble us and to keep us from insolent boasting in those privileges, wherefore through Christ we are made partakers. To this purpose doth the Apostle Paul thus press this point, "Who makes thee to differ from one another?" Meaning, we are all recipients of his mercy, what makes you different, really? It should humble us, it should humble us, and he, it's nice because he points out, humble us, especially with the tendency to boast when we consider the privileges we get from Christ. It's a tendency to think, "Oh, look how important am I that he would do such a great thing for me out of his love." No, his love should not bolster self, it should humble self because we don't deserve his love. And that's where his love becomes very, very precious. And lastly, how should our condition, consider our condition, impact how we relate to others? And this is where it could apply so richly in the home, is in regard of others, it is to be thought of, "To move us the more to commensurate their woeful estate, who yet remain as we once were, to conceive hope that their estate may be altered as well as ours was. To pray and use what means we can that it may be altered, and to provoke Christians to show all meekness to them which were without, the Apostle renders this reason." Very unusual English, basically what he is saying is, when we consider those who are without Christ, it should not make us proud and exalted above them, but to also be merciful toward them, knowing that we once were in their condition. So, the proud Christian should not, uh, has no ground to be proud because he is simply a recipient, and that should impact, this is how you could best, if you're proud about your standing, how do you view those outside of Christ, right? Hey, fellow Filipinos, when you think of the bad government, right? Like, the, you mean, that's the trend now, right, so many things happening in corruption? Read Titus three, when it talks about our submission to government. It doesn't mean we will be passive toward corruption, no, 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 right? Justice is part of the virtue that we are to um possess, godly justice. But it doesn't make us proud, that's the point. Now, of course, this should apply in the home, and here's where I I wanna drive a particular application, I have this for the home, is if there's anyone who sees the flaws of a person, it is those in their own household, right? We we see that the most, cause where all our guards are down, we see our family members in their worst. Um, because, you know, they, there's lesser restraint at times, to lose your temper, to say a bad word, to, you know, to do all sorts of things, and the tendency is to lose patience and mercy toward those in the home. This is one thing we could, uh, uh, ha- one way we could apply this truth. May this make us more patient and more hopeful that when there are struggles in the home, Christ is able to in to come. Alright, so, so uh, we're we're done, right, we're done uh with this. Uh, before that, let's have some Q and A, uh, before we pray, uh, any, any questions or thoughts here? I have a question online on my end, let me just read it. If you have a question, you could just speak, I'm reading a question online, it's a, it's a private message. Hmm. Okay, um, you, you guys are probably wondering, okay, what is, what is he reading? Um, so, a a person asked me a question in in light of um what was said earlier about uh loving not seeking your own, right, not seeking your own benefit, right? And uh, the question is in relation to courtship, alright, to courtship, so the singles, your ears might be perking up, okay, courtship, what is, what is this question? And the question is, how a person now, uh, a person now could take that and have this uh application to that truth, that love is selfless and does not seek its own, right? The argument is this, so, my choice of who I will court doesn't depend on whether she's good for him or not, but whether he can do good for her or not, right? You you see that, the point, like, it doesn't matter if she's good for me or not, anyways, I should be selfless, I won't think about my advantage, right? And so, I'm just gonna think of being good for her. And so, you can imagine, maybe the person is very, you know, uh, uh, seems to be uh not the best fit for for that 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 male, right? And and you just say, "Ah, basta lang, for the, for her good, I won't, I'll be self, I'll selfless, I won't think of her good." So, how, is that right, is that correct, should we court in that way, right? Now, um, this won't be uh the 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 sum total of 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 how to address that. But I don't think, first of all, I don't think that's a good um takeaway, alright, with uh, when it comes to selfless love, alright? Because um, we have to balance that with the other parts of scripture, no, with other parts of scripture. Because selfless love, alright, does not mean that you do not act in wisdom, when particularly in terms of courtship. And when you are courting, alright, uh, we we find a principle in Proverbs, especially Proverbs thirty-one. Sometimes we re- we don't realize that it was given to a son, it was given to a son, right? So, uh, it should be males, really, who who should be very familiar with Proverbs thirty-one, although women could use it as a pattern to grow, of course. But the point is, the the mother shows the son the kind of wife that um he, that 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 is to be um adored above just being externally beautiful. This is the the true virtue and true beauty she's showing, so there should be wisdom in in exercising your choice. Of course, it doesn't mean that the the person should be perfect, but there should be some wisdom pa rin, no? Um, with selecting, and then that's in terms of true godly traits, no, in terms of true godly traits. But that 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 even uh includes the other parts, I I don't wanna use the word compatibility uh because of possible wrong connotations. But there still is a sense where that plays a role in your dynamic as a person and your growth as a person, right? Like, uh, wisdom should be exercised in age gaps, uh, language barriers, sometimes even economical standing, that that, not, it's not limitation, but that could also be a factor. So there's no hard fast rule, no, dapat, this is how, I'll just use the word, how compatible you should be. But walking in wisdom, right, love exercised for the other and for the other's good should be in the context of walking in wisdom. Here's my addition. It could even impact her good, right, her good, as, let's say you really court her, alright? Her good could also be affected if you did not really walk in wisdom in your courtship. So it's still for her good, alright, that you're considering the principles of wisdom. Because I'm not saying that uh God can't work out uh difficult marriages, cause the Lord has displayed that he could. But if it is uh entered in without the use of wisdom, and then you're making it uh uh harder for your spouse because you do not work in wisdom, and it's still not for her good, no? It's still not for the person's good, alright? So I think those are some principles I could think of in terms of that, no? Now, of course, uh, it i- in in trying to seek someone who's your best fit, right? I- it it should not be selfish, no? It it is someone you're seeking to be the object of your self-giving love for their good. I hope that's clear, I hope that's clear, I'm sure there's, there could be more to be said. Anyone else?
Um, Pastor, ano, open up, manas, mo ring, sa mga courtship ba?
Yeah, yeah.
Yung, katong sa Genesis twenty-four, although the very, if we speak about culture, it's very different as of, as we compare this very day, but what is the, parang masasabi natin nga, main principle or scriptural principle that regardless of the culture, it is very relevant up and up until this very day?
Hmm, what what is relevant, Julian?
Ah, what I mean, pastors, meaning, what is the mark scriptural principle behind Genesis twenty-four, although it's very long?
Yeah, yeah, eh, yeah, I'm looking at it now, I think you're talking about uh the wife for Isaac and and the um, how the parents were very involved, and and it even involved uh more people in that pursuit. Uh, uh, the thing, the thing about Genesis twenty-four is, uh, nah, I I I think I need to read it to have a more complete answer, read it afresh, but this I know about it, this I know about it. That the account is not just uh about, you know, kinsema paris ni Isaac. Like, i- it's it's not a, an account that lays out necessarily, primarily, how courtship should be, right? It's not mainly about that. Uh, Genesis twenty-four, we we have to remember, is under the bigger context of um the redemptive history and how the seed of Abraham is uh, is 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 God's means to to bless the nations, right? And so, uh, the Genesis account, the Genesis narrative, really played out the necessity of doing it God's way, that when Abraham, uh, out of uh pragmatism, um, and and probably even lack of trust in God, instead of trusting God to give him a son, he he, listening to the 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 practical advice, nah, with with your uh hand uh handmaid, Gomer, I believe is her name. And so God said, "No, it it will, it will be through the the, Hagar, Hagar, Hagar. It will be uh the specific seed that I will give you." And so, I I think, I think, uh, I wouldn't necessarily, na ba, da, dapat, yun, uh, parents are involved, in in that sense. But there are some principles I'm sure I could extract from that, no? Being under parental authority and being wise of who you choose, nah, not taking from the pagan nations. But I think I will have to read Genesis twenty-four fresh for me to be able to to extract that, Julian. Para, I won't, yeah, I won't say things in haste. Anyone else?
Thank you, Pastor.
Go ahead, go ahead, alright, alright. Okay, it's close to eight, if there's no more questions, unless you wanna, someone wants to sing at one. Okay, alright. So let's conclude with the word of prayer, thank you for for being here again, guys. Let let's ask God to to bless our time. Father in heaven, we, we thank you, Lord, for this time to study domestic godliness. Father, we, Father particularly, we're thankful that we get to meditate on the love of Christ. We have the blessing, Lord, of thinking of how his love should impact our own love for our wives and for the family members of our home. And Father, we pray that more and more as we behold Christ, that we would be transformed into his, into his likeness more and more. And Father, we pray that you would bless these things to our hearts. We ask that you would also guide the brethren here, who still have a full week of labor in the workplace or in their respective responsibilities. We pray that you would guide them, Lord, and help We pray that you would guide them, Lord, and help them, help them always have a heavenly mindset in all that they do. Bless us, Lord, as we conclude, in Jesus's name, amen. Alright, guys. Thank you, thank you.